Twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen to order. If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I want to do this with my head up, my hands raised, my eyes open. To the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, native, just a child.
And please let the record note that, with the exception of Ms. Cares and Mr. Von Losberg, all council members are present this evening. We have minutes to the meeting on March nineteenth. Without objection, they'll be approved. Seeing none, we'll move on to our schedule of committee meetings. Ms. Raybine.
Could you speak up if you please?
I can sure endeavor to. We also have, we have some hearing assistants as well, sir, if you'd need it. Ms. Raybine can help you?
No, we couldn't hear you at all. We're good now.
You're good now? Most, most people don't complain when they can't hear me. It's odd, but we'll, we'll do our best. We have some troubles once in a while with our microphones, but thank you for that. Uh, Ms. Raybine.
Thanks. Uh, so, our committee's schedule for this week, um, all the meetings are being held this coming Wednesday, the twenty-eighth of March. Committee of the whole will lead off from ten-ten in the morning till ten-thirty, followed by Parks and Conservation at ten-thirty-five to ten-fifty. Administration and Finance Committee will meet at ten-fifty-five to eleven in the morning. Public Works Committee will meet from eleven-oh-five until noon. All those meetings are being held right here in City Council chambers.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Any changes to the committee's schedule? Seeing none, we'll move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on the agenda this evening. Yes, ma'am?
Hello, uh, my name is Erin Miller, and I'm here as a renter, but also as an organizer for Ford Montana. A few months ago, back in the fall, we started incubating a renters' union, and we're learning kind of the extent of renters' issues in Missoula. Um, I'm a new Montana resident, um, and I just moved here. So, I naively thought that slum lords and the renters' rights issues that I encountered in Bowling Green, Kentucky, were exclusive to Bowling Green. Um, of course, I quickly learned that that's not the case. Um, as I'm talking with renters here, um, I'm terrified of having the same issues that I had, uh, back home. Uh, maintenance problems being ignored or not fixed, not fixed correctly, uh, increasing rent and/or retaliation for speaking out. Um, these aren't just hypothetical, these are things that are happening to my friends and neighbors here in Missoula. So, we know that rent prices in Missoula are outrageous and ever-climbing. Uh, we know that the average rent in Missoula is seventy percent of occupant income. We know that Missoula, um, that a Missoula resident working minimum wage would have to work sixty hours a week to afford a studio apartment, sixty-five hours a week for a one-bedroom, and eighty-one hours a week for a two-bedroom. The average Missoula renter must work forty-eight hours a week to afford a one-bedroom. And the solution is never as simple as finding another place to live, uh, with, we have here a functionally zero percent vacancy of rental properties. So, renters are getting trapped in awful situations because more often than not, there is literally no other option. So, I want Missoula to be a safe and dignified place to rent. Um, I'm asking the City Council to try and understand the scope and depth of this problem. Our renters' union hopes to have a consistent renters' presence here at City Council meetings, and just as our city government, I just ask that you respect homeowners and renters, as renters make up, um, half of Missoula's population. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winter. Any other general public comment this evening? Yes, sir.
Hello. Uh, my name is Adam LaSalle, and I'm also a renter. I'm just gonna jump right into it. I documented thirteen different instances. One, Mary Heard, property manager, license number RRE-RPM-LIC six-three-six, willfully participated in a scam with her industry colleagues, other property managers affiliated through NARPOM, to deceive consumers and artificially boost online consumer ratings for her business, Rent Smart Missoula, business license two-zero-one-five, M-I-S-S-C-O-N-zero-zero-zero-four-seven. Rent Smart Missoula is a property management business owned and operated solely by Mary Heard and her husband, Tom Heard. The scam occurs when a participant writes and publicizes a consumer-like five-star review from his or her personal account to a colleague's advertised business profile online. The owner of that business profile then reciprocates by writing and publicizing another consumer-like five-star review from his or her personal account to the other participant's advertised business profile online. However, neither of the participants are actually consumers of each other's business. The end result is strategically achieved by participants of the scam, including Mary Heard, and allows them an unfair advantage over local competitors and a monopoly over consumers by way of deceptive business practice and false advertising. The platforms used are Google, Yelp, and Facebook, although Mary Heard takes a step further by showcasing the consumer-like five-star reviews she received in trade and touting them as having been written by actual clients and customers on her Rent Smart Missoula website. However, evidence I've collected shows that Mary Heard's claims are a lie. Aside from the thirteen different instances, Rent Smart Missoula has also received consumer-like five-star reviews from Mary Heard's brother, sister, and niece. Mary Heard even gave her own business profile a five-star review, rating on Yelp from her personal account to counter a negative review left by an actual consumer. These reviews persuaded me to trust Mary Heard and enter into a legally binding agreement with Rent Smart Missoula, but Mary Heard's behavior violates Google's comment posting policy, Yelp's content guidelines, NARPOM's Code of Ethics, and violates Section three-zero-one-four-one-zero-three of Montana's Consumer Protection Act. Mary Heard's actions are blatant and deliberate consumer fraud and harmful to Missoula's reputation of being a friendly city. And now that I'm speaking out about this, I should also mention that Mary Heard and her husband possess a copy of the key to my apartment as part of the lease. The lack of tenant protection laws in the state of Montana is what attracts people like Mary Heard to the property management business. The law currently gives a landlord the power and legal right to evict and displace entire families from their homes with no reason at all. This creates a loophole by allowing landlords the ability to covertly discriminate protected classes or retaliate. Same goes for a landlord's ability to require any amount of a security deposit from an applicant with no cap or set criteria. I had excellent credit and rental history and enough funds to pay my entire lease upfront. However, after I disclosed that I had an emotional support animal, Tom and Mary Heard required more than three times the amount of the monthly rental, uh, sorry, three times the monthly rental amount as a security deposit for me. Altogether, I paid Mary Heard just shy of four thousand dollars upfront in money orders to move into an eight-hundred-and-fifty-dollar-a-month apartment. Imagine how I felt after settling in when I discovered that almost all of the five-star reviews for Rent Smart on Yelp were fake and written in trade for Mary Heard by her industry colleagues. My move to Missoula alone cost over fifteen hundred dollars, and here I am, being scammed by a local property manager who has been in business for eighteen years. In closing, I'm left with a question. When I met Mary Heard, she stated that the landlord-tenant laws in the state of Montana are equal to both parties, but is landlord-tenant, is landlord-tenant equality in the eyes of the law actually fair? Take, for example, the burden of a family that has to search for and pay to secure a new rental after being evicted, incur moving expenses, and then box and literally unbox, sorry, box and unbox literally everything, sometimes more than once a year. Is that family's burden equal to a landlord's who profits from renters? This is not an isolated incident, so I urge you to take care of Missoula renters by placing this matter on your agenda and take a fresh approach to making landlord-tenant laws fair instead of just equal. As it stands, renters are negatively and disproportionately affected by landlord-tenant equality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCall. Pardon me. Any other general public comment this evening?
Hello, my name is Roy McKenzie. I'm also a renter, um, but I'm not here to talk about rent. Um, but I do hope that you all consider what was said today with regards to renters. Um, I wanna make sure that I can live in Missoula for a long time and, um, and feel, feel safe and comfortable and also like I won't be gouged, but, um, I wanted to say thank you for the free bus service. It's awesome in town. I would ask that you look into making the bus service run on Sundays as well. Um, I was trying to get someplace on Sunday and I couldn't, um, so I had to take a Lyft, which costs like fifteen bucks, and that's really expensive, and, uh, so, please, if you could, look into running the buses on Sundays. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKenzie. Any other general public comment this evening?
Hello, um, my name is Claudia Narcisco. I live at fifty-six oh-seven Garrett, and I'm here today just, uh, to share some information. There's gonna be a conference, um, at the University of Montana. It's called Columbia River Treaty, One River Ethics Matter. It's an all-day conference, and I have, um, an invitation. I wanna just give you some information, if I could approach and maybe hand it out.
Certainly.
And I could give you a little bit of background.
You can just give them all to Ms. West, and we'll just pass them around, save you a little time. Thank you.
So, it's, and the Columbia River Treaty, um, hasn't been getting the, um, the notice around here that it has been getting and it should be getting. Um, and if you're unaware of it, Canada and the United States are renegotiating a treaty, and the One River Ethics Matter component is a group of tribes, non, uh, NGOs, um, and interfaith peoples who are trying to have ecosystem function and correcting historic wrongs associated with, um, fisheries and other issues that are important to the tribal peoples incorporated into the treaty. So, there's, um, I have one more thing. I could probably just leave it with somebody. I didn't wanna print out all of this, but there's a number of different speakers. There'll be four panels, and it's framed on something called the Pastoral Letter, um, that's written by the Archbishop of Washington State, and it's based on four pillars, the vision, uh, the river of the moment, the river of, um, our memory, the river of our vision, and the river of our responsibility. And there will be local people who will be, um, on the panels. Pat Smith, I don't know if you know him, he'll be moderating. Uh, Sarah Bates will also be moderating. So, I just wanna make sure you're all aware of it, and we're kind of filling it pretty quick. We're gonna serve lunch, and, um, and there's'll be reception afterwards. So, this is, well, you'll, hopefully you'll get something more formal in the mail, but if not, uh, please accept this as an invitation.
Thank you, Ms. Narcisco. Any other general public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on to our consent agenda items. On that agenda, we're approved unanimously in City Council committees, and we save a little time on Monday evening by considering these items all at once. Ms. Raybine, we'll read the list of consent agenda items aloud, so those in the audience and those at home will know what we're considering. We'll take comment before we vote. Ms. Raybine.
Thank you. Tonight's consent agenda has seven items, and the first item, as always, is claims, which are the city's accounts payable. It is to prove claims in the amount of seven-hundred-ninety-one-thousand-one-hundred-twenty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. Number two is the first reading and preliminary adoption, um, on an ordinance. We're setting a public hearing for April ninth, two thousand and eighteen, and preliminarily adopting an ordinance to rezone two-two-zero-three, South Twelfth Street West, lots one through twelve. Uh, they're forty-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty square feet of Block eighty-three in the Carline Edition, legally described as Section twenty-nine Township thirteen North Range nineteen West, from the zoning district RM two-point-seven, which is a residential multi-dwelling zoning district in the city, to RM two residential, which is also a multi-dwelling, uh, district in the city, uh, based on the findings of fact in, uh, the staff report, and, uh, we're also referring that ordinance to the Land Use and Planning Committee, which will preview it prior to the public hearing on the ninth. Uh, number three is also the first reading and preliminary adoption of an ordinance. We're setting a hearing on this matter for April ninth, two thousand and eighteen, and preliminarily adopting an ordinance to rezone thirty-seven-twenty North Reserve Street and thirty-fifty Stockman Road in Section eight Township thirteen North Range nineteen West from C-two-four Community Commercial, uh, and M-one-dash-two Limited Industrial to C-two-dash-four Community Commercial, based on the findings of fact that are in the staff report and referring that ordinance as well to the Land Use and Planning Committee for a preview prior to the public hearing. Number four is to adopt a resolution of the Missoula City Council of intent to donate certain surplus City of Missoula Fire Department equipment to fire departments of Condon, Moore, Hobson, and Stanford, Montana. These are extrication tools, um, in accordance with the provisions of Section seven-dash-eight-dash-one-oh-one of Montana Code Annotated. That's also known as the state law. Uh, number five is to confirm the mayor's appointment of Kate Leinberger to the Tourism Business Improvement District Board for a term that begins immediately and expires on December first of two thousand and eighteen. Uh, number six is to approve a waiver from Missoula Municipal Code, uh, nine-point-three-zero, that's our chapter on noise control, uh, to Jackson Contractor Group Incorporated for construction, uh, at Hellgate High School. And finally, number seven is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a purchase agreement with Dell Incorporated for the purchase of supervisory control and data acquisition computer equipment and software, also known as SCADA equipment, for Missoula Water at a cost not to exceed thirty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-twenty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Anyone in the audience care to comment on any of the items on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, questions or comments from council members? Mr. Ramos?
Um, here we go again on this. So, um, on item one on the consent agenda, um, there is an, oh, just about an eight-thousand-dollar, um, charge or expense that we're paying out to Boom Carlberg, uh, for the acquisition of Mountain Water, and, uh, I know this is a contentious ra, uh, issue, and I really, I don't really like bringing this up at all, but I think it's important that I know, uh, or let the folks know out in the audience why I'm voting no consistently on these. First of all, I wanna clarify the fact that I do believe in paying people for the services that they provide to the city. I know President Von Losberg mentioned that last week, or two weeks ago, or last time this came up, and I couldn't agree more. However, I do think that, um, with services, especially government services, we need to know how much the firm is charging us per hour. We need to know what service they're charging us for, and we need to be able to compare that, because as much as I like the private sector, I mean, I'm conservative, I'm supposed to love the, the private sector, but I do know that they take advantage of governments fairly frequently, and I know that all of us are up here voting on this because I think it's our, our job and our duty to make sure that we are getting what's, what's owed, or what's owed to the city, and we're not being overcharged. And I don't know a lot about this stuff, and many of my fellow council members know a lot, and I think they could add real input as well if we were able to look at these bills, um, and, and see kind of what was happening, and also, um, under Article Two, Section Nine of the Montana Constitution, um, the right to know. It says, "No person shall be deprived of the right to examine documents or to observe the deliberations of all public bodies or agencies of state government and its subdivisions except in cases in which the demand of individual privacy clearly exceeds the merits of public disclosure." And I think that that, I do not think this has anything to do with, uh, individual privacy, and I would just like to see a formal legal opinion from Mr. Nugent. I don't know if, uh, he's already provided one of those, but I'd like to see that, 'cause I am concerned when we took our oath, we're supposed to uphold and protect and defend the Constitution of the state of Montana, and for this, right under the, the Constitution doesn't seem clear to me. So, I think it's fair that maybe I have a briefing on that, and that is about it. So, unfortunately, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that Boom Carlberg is corrupt by any stretch, and what I'm suggesting is just that it's our duty when we're voting on something that we have the ability to ensure that the citizens have the right to look at these individual claims and to make sure that we're not getting gouged on huge amounts of, of hourly payments and hourly fees. So, I will be voting no tonight on that, and would like to separate the question.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. Further discussion on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote on item number one.
Okay, on item number one of the consent agenda, Anderson. Anderson votes yes. Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Becerra. Becerra votes yes. DeBary. DeBary votes yes. Harp. Harp votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Merritt? Merritt votes yes. Ramos?
No.
Ramos votes no. And West? West votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is nine ayes, one nay, and, uh, two absinthe.
Pardon me, and that, uh, set of claims is approved, and we'll have a roll call vote on items two through seven.
On items two through seven of the consent agenda, Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Becerra. Becerra votes yes. DeBary. DeBary votes yes. Harp. Harp votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Merritt. Merritt votes yes. Ramos? Ramos votes yes. West? West votes yes, and Anderson? Anderson votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is ten ayes and two absinthe.
And the remainder of the consent agenda is approved, and we'll move on to comments from city staff, agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, and the community forum, and we have a report this evening from the Lewis and Clark Neighborhood Council. Unless we don't. All right, Mr. Westfall isn't here this evening. We do have a community forum report, and I see Mr. Lindler primed to offer that.
Mayor Ingham and City Council members, when I started attending community forum meetings a few years ago, we sometimes struggled to assemble a quorum. Now, we struggle to find enough chairs and microphones. Thursday night, fourteen neighborhoods were represented, including one represented by Cora Shepherd, a student who is on the Moose Can Gullies Leadership Team with her mother, Karen. The three neighborhoods that weren't represented are in transition and don't have a community forum representative serving at the moment. We had three presentations. Joel Baird, General Manager of Missoula Community Access Television, recruited members for focus groups exploring the role of community access television as part of the renewal process for the cable franchise. Mark Thane, Superintendent of Missoula County Public Schools, discussed the elementary and high school levies that will be on the May, May-al-only ballot. Kathy Kleats, Big Sky Public Relations, and Shane Stack, Montana Department of Transportation, discussed the Russell Street Reconstruction and Van Buren Roundabout projects. Forum representatives had a number of questions about both projects. Heidi West filled in for Michelle Karis as the City Council Liaison. Thanks to Heidi, Michelle, the Office of Neighborhood Staff, and to the mayor and city council for working to make the neighborhood councils and community forum a success. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindler. Uh, we'll move on to special presentations. We have one in the form of a proclamation this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, whereas Missoula residents value being good stewards of their city and its surroundings, and where, uh, whereas using our local resources wisely, creating livable communities and encouraging healthy neighborhoods helps provide sustainable environments for all Missoula residents in perpetuity, and whereas regular renewal of our commitment to expanding our understanding and knowledge of sustainable living practices in an urban environment is a value, uh, is a valuable way to support the same, and whereas the original Earth Day, forty-eight years ago, in April nineteen-seventy, focused on creating a sustainable world, and whereas spring, allegedly, that's what we're having, brings the promise of new life and the hope of new ventures and the start of great plans, now therefore I, John Ingham, Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana, do hereby proclaim April two thousand and eighteen as Sustainable, uh, Sustainability Month in Missoula, Montana, and there are lots of good folks working toward that end. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. State law and our own council rules set, uh, guidelines for inviting comment in a formal way on a variety of issues. Following the staff report on each of these items, the council and I will invite comment. Council typically votes on the same evening as the public hearing unless one member elects to return that item to committee for further consideration, and we're gonna tweak the order just a little bit because we have an item that I suspect will take a little more time. So, we'll begin with Cowboy Flats. We'll then do the Invermere Subdivision Resolution, and then we'll do the, uh, proposed rezoning at Beckwith. And with our staff report on Cowboy Flats is Ms. McNamara.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Anita McNamara with Development Services. Development Services has received written notice from Door Lane LLC, represented by Dale McCormick of PCI, Inc., of intent to file Phase One of Cowboy Flat Subdivision located at thirty-seven-twenty Door Lane. The property is located on the east side of Door Lane, which is north of Thirty-Ninth Street and south of Brook Street, just across Door Lane from the South Crossing Shopping Center. The entire property is outlined in yellow on this slide. At its regularly scheduled meeting on November the sixth, two thousand and seventeen, the Missoula City Council voted to approve the preliminary plat for the Cowboy Flat Subdivision in two phases, subject to twenty conditions of approval. For phase development, per Montana Code Annotated, the governing body shall determine whether anything has changed as far as regulations or new information since the time the subdivision received preliminary plat approval, when each phase is submitted for final plat review. Phase development review is a pre-public hearing information item at Land Use and Planning Committee and a public hearing before City Council. State law provides a statutory deadline when, statutory deadline requiring the public hearing before the governing body within thirty working days of when the subdividers notice to file the phase is received. The deadline for this project is March twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, and this item is only here today because it is a phase development which requires a public hearing per the MCAs. So, at this time, the applicant is requesting City Council review and approve a finding of no new adverse impacts for Phase One. No changes are proposed, and no new information has arisen since City Council approved the preliminary plat, and there have been no changes to applicable regulations or ordinances that concern the primary review criteria, which are listed on this slide. This slide contains a graphic that shows the outline of Phase One, which is unchanged from the preliminary plat approval by council in November. And this evening, staff recommends approval of Phase One of Cowboy Flat Subdivision based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation this evening. Dale McCormick with PCI is also here this evening for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. McNamara. Mr. McCormick, anything to add? If you can get here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. For the record, Dale McCormick with PCI, representing Door Lane LLC. Um, I wanna thank Anita for her work on this. This is a new step in the process that at the beginning of this project, we didn't anticipate it taking an additional six to eight weeks, so I appreciate her help keeping things moving, and, uh, I can answer any questions you might have, and basically here to request, uh, your support of the recording of the Phase One plat, uh, and with staff's recommended condition, um, motion. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. With that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment on this plat? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Questions from council? Mr. DeBary.
I asked Mr. McCormick during LUP about, uh, their intention to file Phase Two, and I just thought it'd be worth, uh, having that on the record if Mr. McCormick might, uh, be able to answer what their plans are for continuing, um, this subdivision to completion.
Sure, so, um, construction will start soon. It's gone out to bid, and we've selected a contractor, and depending on home sales, the Phase Two plat may be recorded in the fall, or if not, in the spring, but there's a possibility that you'll be seeing Phase Two, um, at the end of the summer as well. Thank you.
Further questions? All right, Mr. DeBary.
So, I move that, um, council approve Phase One of Cowboy Flat Subdivision located at thirty-seven-twenty Door Lane and legally described as the south half of the southwest quarter of Section thirty-two Township thirteen North, Range nineteen West, based on the findings of fact and the conclusions of law in the staff report.
That motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion?
May I speak to it?
You may.
As, uh, Mr. McCormick noted, um, recent changes in state law requires that phase subdivisions, um, have additional review at the time each phase is filed, and so, this obviously takes additional time, uh, on part of the developer to put information together and also on the part of staff to review that, and, um, I guess with subdivisions that are of this size, I, I would just like to ask that folks consider whether it's worth doing a phasing plan like this because it does require extra time and staff resources, and as Mr. McCormick mentioned... does require extra time and staff resources. And as Mr. McCormick mentioned, it's very likely that this whole subdivision will be done within a year or so. And I guess I think that it is probably worth doing it as one phase rather than as two to limit the amount of time and resources that staff and the applicant have to devote to it. But I will be supporting the motion. And that's my comment.
And you should talk to your legislator. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
On the motion to approve Phase 1 of the Cowboy Flat Subdivision, Basara votes yes. Dabari votes yes. Harp votes yes. Hess votes yes. Jones votes yes. Merritt votes yes. Ramos votes yes. West votes yes. Anderson votes yes. And Armstrong votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That's 10 ayes and 2 nays.
And the motion's approved. Our second public hearing this evening is on a resolution to annex and zone Phases 1, 1A, and future 2A of Invermere Subdivision. And our staff report this evening comes from Mr. Larson.
Good evening, Drew Larson, Development Services. And tonight is an annexation by petition method for property legally described as Phase 1 and 1A of Invermere Subdivision, along with the parts of land described with the meets and bounds provided in petition at number 9884, which is actually now known as Phase 2A of Invermere Subdivision. So the subject property is located in the Linda Vista area at the south end of Missoula. The property here is outlined in red, and the existing city limits are shown in orange. So the subject annexation includes 26 originally platted lots within Phase 1 and 1A of Invermere, which all currently contain detached or single detached houses. So with those house constructions, each one is connected to city sewer, and along with a city sewer connection, each property has filed a petition requesting annexation into the city limits, waiving their right to protest annexation. And so each one of those 26 lots has a petition recorded against it. They are all included in the sire record for tonight. And then Phase 2A was that 9884, which was filed by the developer. And there is a number of people chomping at the bit waiting to get building permits from the city of Missoula. In addition, state law requires that, along with all annexations, that we annex adjacent rights of way, as well as any parks within the subdivision. So the green outlined up here are existing park areas within the Invermere subdivision. And on this next slide will be the shown right of way that we're also annexing along with Phase 2A. So that's portions of Merriweather Street and that portion of Miller Creek Road there. So, along with annexation in state law, it permits cities to assign zoning at the time of annexation, as long as it is consistent with three criteria listed in MCA. And Title 20 has actually adopted identical language to these. And so the zoning assigned at the time of annexation must be comparable to land uses authorized in the county, permit authorized uses by county officials, and three, be consistent with our land use and zoning recommendations in our growth policy. So quickly, the property is zoned, CRR 2 in the county, which permits two dwelling units per acre. The subdivision was approved back in, I believe it was 2000, late 90s, early 2000s, at two dwelling units per acre. Most of the lot sizes are 10,000 to 15,000 square feet, but all meets that two dwelling units per acre that is permitted by the CRR 2. The comparable zoning in the city is R20, which is also two dwelling units per acre, but has a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. The existing growth policy is the most recent, R-Missoula 2035, which recommends a residential designation low, which is one to two dwelling units per acre, which would also be consistent with the county zoning and the comparable city zoning. So with that, staff recommends that council this evening adopts a resolution to annex and incorporate Invermere Phases 1, 1A, and 2A into the city, and zone them R20 residential, at least all the residential lots, and then OP1 for all the park space. And that was a parks request when we were doing the annexation agency review. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. And with that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment on this proposed annexation and rezoning? With that, I will close the public hearing. Questions from council members. Seeing none, Mr. Dabari.
I move council adopt a resolution extending the corporate limits of Missoula, Montana to annex within the boundaries of the city a certain parcel of land described as Phases 1 and 1A of the Invermere Subdivision located in the Miller Creek area, along with a parcel of land legally described by meets and bounds in petition number 9884, to be known as Phase 2A of Invermere Subdivision, and zone the residential lots, R20 residential, and all park areas, OP1 open space in the city.
That motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
On the resolution to annex and zone, Dabari votes yes. Harp votes yes. Hess votes yes. Jones votes yes. Merritt votes yes. Ramos votes yes. West votes yes. Anderson votes yes. Armstrong votes yes. And Basara votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is 10 ayes and 2 nays.
And the motion is approved. Mr. Larson, was that your last staff report?
It is my last staff report at city council. Most of you will see me again at Public Works this Wednesday, but my last day with the city of Missoula is this next Monday.
Well, we appreciate all of your hard work, your great presentations, and wish you well in future endeavors. If this were your last last, I would imagine some folks would see you next door, so.
Well, you may be able to find me there anyways. Have a good night, and thank you for letting me serve the city of Missoula.
Thank you, Drew. Our final public hearing this evening is on a request to rezone property at 210 West Beckwith from R5.4 to R2.7. And our staff report this evening comes from Ms. Baker.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jenny Baker. I'm with Development Services. And tonight, I am going to present to you a request from Torin Eder and Caden Bardesley, both of whom are here this evening. They are with EBC Development, and they are asking to rezone 210 West Beckwith Avenue from the existing R5.4 single dwelling residential to RT2.7. It's also a residential district, which permits two units and townhouses. This rezoning will result in a standard zoning district under Title 20, which cannot be This is the location on the property. On this slide, it is outlined in red. It's on Beckwith and at the edge of the Slant Streets neighborhood. It's just south of 6th Street. It's part of City Council Ward 3 and the Rose Park Neighborhood Council. This is a closer view of the parcel. It currently has a single dwelling unit on it. It's 13,564 square feet. At this size, the parcel would permit two dwelling units under the current zoning, and under the requested zoning, it will permit up to four dwelling units. The area surrounding the property has a mix of single and duplex residential building types, though all parcels immediately adjacent to this property are single residences. The applicable regional plan is the R-Missoula City Growth Policy, which recommends a land use designation in this area of residential high. That is a density of greater than 24 dwelling units per acre. Zoning districts that most closely align with this density recommendation are RM1-45, RM1-35, RM1.5, and RM.5. All of those are multi-dwelling residential districts. The applicant is requesting RT2.7 residential, which allows 16 dwelling units per acre. This is greater than the current R5.4 residential, which allows eight, but significantly below the density recommended by the growth policy. Areas designated as residential high density in the growth policy are ones which are close to the core of the community, where services and infrastructure already exist. The growth policy supports a focus inward location for building, focus inward approach to development, rather. This means encouraging denser development in areas that have existing infrastructure, such as roads and sidewalks, water and sewer service, and access to multimodal transit options, such as mountain line. And that's what this image shows. There's a bus route along Stevens Avenue. That's the number seven. And there's another one along Fifth and Sixth. The star is the location of the property. So you can see that there are bus routes in close proximity to this location. A little bit to the left there, there's a green line, and that is the bitter root trail. So this property is also pretty close to bicycle options for transportation. The growth policy also focuses on proximity to services, such as schools and shopping. Orange Street Food Farm is pretty close to this, and there are schools in the area. And finally, the growth policy focuses on a central location close to the urban core. This location meets all of those criteria. This slide is looking at lot size by zoning district. The current district requires a minimum lot size of 5,400 square feet. Districts which are immediately adjacent to the R5.4 require smaller lot sizes of 3,000 square feet. So that is both RT2.7 and also RM1-45, which also requires a minimum of 3,000 square feet. The requested zoning would allow lots of 3,000 square feet. This is a historical zoning map. It shows that this area has been part of the city since zoning was applied in 1932. Actually, it was part of the city before that. It had zoning when it was first applied in 1932. From that time until 1972, the zoning in this area was considered Zone B, which is that brown section on the map. Zone B was uniformly a multi-dwelling area comparable to today's RM1-45. In 1972, there was a rezone request for a small triangular area that you see on the zoning slide, and that changed the district from the multi-dwelling to the current R5.4 district that it is today. So although the immediate area has been built out with single dwellings, this area has been one that was intended for denser multi-dwelling development over the course of many years. Okay. In looking at a comparison for the current and the requested zoning, R5.4 allows a single dwelling detached house building type, whereas RT2.7 will allow a two-unit or townhouse building type. So that could be a duplex. The minimum parcel area, as we just discussed, is 5,400 square feet in R5.4, whereas in RT2.7, it is 3,000 square feet. The minimum area per unit is 5,400 square feet in R5.4. It's 2,700 square feet in the RT2.7 district. Setbacks are similar. They're 20 front and rear. In R5.4, it is 7.5 feet on the side, or one-third the height, whichever is greater. In RT2.7, that side setback is a little smaller. It's five feet. There is no difference in the height permitted in either of these districts. It's 30 feet, or if the roof pitch is eight over 12, which is steeper, it can be 35 feet. And finally, units per acre, eight are permitted in R5.4. And in RT2.7, 16 are permitted per acre. Here are a few pictures of the site. On the left is a picture if you are standing on Beckwith and looking onto the lot. This is the existing dwelling, which would be removed. If you are looking east, on the top right, I guess, this is what you will see. That is the lot looking towards the alley that sort of extends from Hickory Street. And then the one on the bottom is if you are standing in that alley that extends from Hickory and sort of looking at the back of the house and the garage. So that's looking As council members are aware, we have a provision in zoning that allows neighbors to file a formal protest to rezoning requests. The protest petition is considered valid if it is signed by owners of 25% or more of the parcels, or units, as defined by Montana State Code, within 150 feet of the parcel that's the subject of the proposed change. On this slide, the parcel that's the subject of the change has the stripes, and that 150-foot perimeter is delineated by the thick red line. There are 21 parcels that touch this, that are within this 150-foot perimeter. That means that five property owners constitute the 25% threshold. Today, Development Services received petitions from 12 neighbors, of which eight were verified as valid. Those eight are marked on the map with the X's, and that exceeds the threshold for a formal protest. As you know, when a valid protest petition has been filed, it requires a two-thirds majority vote of those members present and voting. Since there are 10 of you here tonight, that means that seven of you would have to vote to approve this request. This item went to planning board on the 6th of March. There was a discussion of neighbor concerns at that time, and those addressed the adequacy of the infrastructure surrounding this parcel, because it primarily will front on an alley rather than a public street. Neighbors expressed concerns about the additional traffic that such density could bring to the area, and they also questioned the appropriateness of the infill density here. Planning board members considered these concerns, and they eventually made their vote. With all eight members voting unanimously for approval, they based their vote on the consideration of this request being in line with the growth policy recommendation for the area. Now I'll talk about the zoning amendment review criteria. These address whether the proposed change in zoning is in accordance with the growth policy, if it facilitates the provision of motorized and active transportation facilities and other public infrastructure like sewer and water, whether it is compatible urban growth, whether it promotes the public health and safety, and whether it considers the character of the district and the suitability of uses. In this instance, the proposed rezon complies with the goals and objectives of the growth policy, and comes closer to accomplishing the land use designation of residential high density in this area, where greater than 24 dwelling units per acre are recommended. The rezoning promotes compatible urban growth because it better implements the growth policy, which encourages greater density in areas close to the urban core. I skipped public services and transportation, but as we discussed, this is close to bus routes. There is existing sidewalk in the area, and there are also bicycle options close by as well. In considering whether it promotes the public health and safety, the rezon proposes development that's compatible with the urban growth in this area. It accords with promotion of public health and safety by being in an area with existing public services, including police, fire, and emergency services. There is access to sewer and water. It is also in close proximity to schools, parks, the trail system, and other public amenities. Finally, in considering whether this rezoning gives reasonable consideration to district character and suitability of uses, the proposed use is residential, the same as that on all of the parcels. of the parcels surrounding the one for which we have this request. As a result, the staff recommendation for this request is to approve the rezon request for 210 West Beckwith Avenue, from R 5.4 residential, single-dwelling, to RT 2.7 residential, two-unit or townhouse, based on the findings of fact in the staff report. That is my presentation. Thank you. I know that Mr. Etter also has some things he would like to present to you this evening.
Pardon me. Thank you, Ms. Baker. And on behalf of the applicant, we call this the Boy Scout bail. Nice to see you, folks. No merit badge if you don't stay till the end, I'm just saying.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Hello, everyone. My name is Torrin Etter. I'm one of the owners of 210 West Beckwith Street, along with my business partner, Caden Bardslay. The population of Missoula County is projected to grow by about 25,000 people in the next 20 years, and over three-quarters of new residents will choose to settle in the city's urban services area, generating the need for about 9,000 new residential units. The city will continue to encourage a compact urban form while accommodating the full spectrum of housing choices. That's according to the adopted R-Missoula growth policy. Caden and I agree with the growth plan that the city should promote a compact urban form by encouraging residential development to occur within existing neighborhoods in the urban core. Very few empty lots, however, are available in these existing neighborhoods. We are a small company that builds exclusively, single-family detached houses in the urban core of Missoula. We bought the property at 210 West Beckwith Street in December of 2017. The property consists of an abandoned two-bedroom rental house with a leaking water main and leaking gas line on a poor foundation, a small, single-car garage functioning as a storage shed, an unkempt yard with an abandoned car and boat, all on a 13,500-square-foot lot. Given the condition of the structures, the size of the property, and the central location, we felt this was a good opportunity to provide new, single-family housing, and to bring new families into this great Missoula neighborhood. What also stuck out to us was the fact that the property is in a small island of R 5.4 zoning, and was originally zoned more densely, as Jenny described in her presentation. This accounts for the fact that the house immediately to the west of our property, and sharing two property lines with it, is on a 3,900-square-foot lot, smaller than the current zoning would allow, but large enough under the original, more dense zoning. I'm going to bring up a few images here. So the property that, this is an overlay that we've done of a potential four-unit or four-house footprints over our property boundary, which is the outer white line, and you can see the house that we're referring to, to the west, that's a 3,900-square-foot lot. It's the same size as one of the lots that we would propose. So we are proposing one lot that's exactly the same size as this neighboring lot, and three slightly smaller lots. Our proposed rezoning would allow us to develop the property at its original intended density and be in keeping with the city's growth policy. As you can also see on the image, our proposed density is actually quite similar to other parts of the immediate neighborhood, especially if you look up along Sixth Street, even immediately surrounding the property. You know, our proposal doesn't appear to be much denser at all than the surrounding neighborhood. Here are some reasons we think this is a good area to add four detached, single-family homes. Some of it's going to repeat a little bit on what Jenny said. This is a very walkable neighborhood, close to downtown, city parks, and bus routes. It's close to elementary, middle, and high schools, and the University of Montana. Our property is two blocks away from Orange Street Food Farm, and about four blocks away from a connection to the Bitterroot branch of Missoula's bike trail network. We understand that the neighbors are concerned about an increase in traffic generated by new houses along this alley. While there will be a modest increase in the total number of vehicles in the area, three major streets nearby, Beckwith, Orange, and Sixth Streets, can accommodate this increase in traffic. Currently, much of the traffic through this 20-foot-wide alley is shortcut traffic from Sixth Street to Beckwith Street. By having new houses along the alley, with slow-moving traffic backing in and out of the new parking spaces that were required to provide, we feel this will help to reduce the use of the alley as an unintended shortcut. So this is a CAD version of the same proposed site plan, a potential four-house site plan, showing sidewalk that I'll get to next here. With feedback from city engineering, we are proposing a five-foot-wide sidewalk on our property, along the entire 196-foot-long property line abutting the alley, to provide pedestrian-vehicle separation, and a pedestrian connection from Beckwith to Hickory and Sixth Streets, where no such connection exists now. This image shows our proposed layout for four houses on the site with the new sidewalk connection along the alley. It also shows that the property lines between our proposed houses, here in bold, are the same property lines of the originally platted lots of this subdivision. And I'll just flip briefly to survey of the property that we had done. And so you can see, we basically are able to use the existing lot lines, with very little exception up in this corner. All of our parking will be alley access, which is preferred, if not required, by city engineering. If given the okay by the city, we will provide an additional parking spot beyond the required spots to reduce any impact on the street parking situation in the neighborhood. This property and our rezoning application, has recently been the subject of much discussion amongst the neighbors, and a Missoulian newspaper article that propagated some misinformation. So while we realize that rezoning cannot be conditioned, given the publicity of our rezoning proposal, we feel it's appropriate to talk a little bit about the specifics of what we do intend to do. To be clear, what we intend to build are four, single-family, standalone homes, each separately owned, and each on its own legal lot. We are not building townhouses or townhomes, which was the bold print in the Missoulian article. We are not building duplexes or any sort of multifamily housing, and we are not using a townhome exemption to divide this property. To date, our company has only built single-family homes, which are all owner-occupied at this time. By bringing new houses into the urban core, our proposal is squarely in line with Missoula's adopted growth policy. We feel strongly that bringing new, single-family housing and new families into some of Missoula's great existing neighborhoods will add positively to the character of these neighborhoods. And kind of in closing, I thought it might be helpful to show some examples of a few of the houses that we've built around town. So here are four examples of houses on different-sized lots. This house and this house are on larger lots, substantially larger lots, but they still give everybody an idea of the style of houses that we build. This lot, or this house, is on a 3,000-square-foot lot. And these houses here are actually on lots that are about half the size of the smallest lot that we would propose in our proposal, around 1,800, 1,900-square-foot lots on those, on average. And also wanted to show an example of how infill housing on smaller lots can maintain and even add to the character of the surrounding neighborhood. So this is a photo of a project that shows that. So thank you for your time, everybody. I appreciate it. For all my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Etter. Appreciate that. And with that, I will open the public hearing. How many folks want to comment tonight, just by a show of hands? Okay, that gives me a sense. If you could do me a favor and try to keep your remarks around three minutes, I'd appreciate it. And please, step right up. Tell us who you are for the record, and what you think.
Mayor, Council, good evening.
We have to ask for a little bit more volume.
More volume. All right. I'll do. I have two comments. I have my own, and then I'm going to comment on behalf of my neighbor Stacy Rye, if that's all right. So I guess I'm speaking from the perspective of a newcomer to the neighborhood. My wife and I moved there in 2012.
Initially, identify yourself for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bob Ellenbecker.
Thank you.
And we bought the lot and the home at 820 Walnut Street. And, you know, we bought the lot with the intent of putting down some roots there. We love the aesthetic of the neighborhood, and it wasn't too long after meeting our neighbors that we fell in love with the community. And I don't see how high-density housing is going to add to the value that we put in the community or in the neighborhood and our home. We just have some great concerns of seeing such a high-density of housing, big concerns about the use of the Hickory Alley. If you've ever, I don't know if you've been there, but boy, there's not much there, and it's hard to imagine that kind of volume of traffic being used for that. So, you know, I think, I'm not opposed to change, I'm not opposed to development, but I think it should be done wisely, and responsibly, and reasonably, and I think that some positive change can be made by maintaining the current zoning of the neighborhood. And now I have Stacy's comments. See if I can keep this to three minutes, if this is.
Oh, you will.
I know. Dear City Council, I am not against infill, but I do believe that it should be done reasonably, balanced, and predictably. The proposal on West Beckwith with four homes shotgun-style is none of these things in why I signed the petition. I have always known that this back lot would have a home on it. I didn't think it would have three homes and a new home on the front of the lot facing West Beckwith. The Slant Streets developed like most of the older neighborhoods, small, narrow, and long lots. Most people bought at least two lots, hence why this neighborhood is zoned R 5.4. I was on council when we passed Title 20. This neighborhood was deemed most compatible for R 20, and to change that so soon after we worked so hard to update the zoning in Missoula is hard for me to comprehend, and makes me feel like the city is ignoring the work that we did, and so soon afterwards. What we used to hear was that people needed predictability. Approving this proposal is the opposite of predictable. Finally, I can see having two homes there, or maybe even three, but four is not balanced for this neighborhood. We need housing, but in my experience, both as a city council member and in real estate, is that we need an entire additional pleasant view subdivision. I expected first-time homebuyers to want the smaller lots with infill homes. The complete opposite has been true. Most young people want a yard. They all have dogs. Most have two. Briggs Court comes to mind as a recent development in terms of attainable housing with homes on lots ranging from 4,500 to 5,500 square feet. The way to achieve more housing is through both small infill and large subdivisions, but not at the expense of changing a neighborhood so completely out of whack with what's there. There is room for an additional home on this lot, and I've expected that for years. There is not room, nor street access, for four homes at the expense of those who live there. Stacy Rye, 240 West Beckwith Street.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
No applause, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rosie Smith, and I'm a neighbor. I'm not within that special zone, but I'm still a special person. And that Slant Street neighborhood is a very special neighborhood, and the amount of density you're talking about putting on that lot is very concerning to me. The few blocks away that I live, I have my small home on a lot and a half, because the lots, as they are designated, are way too small for a single-dwelling home. So I could see a couple of homes being there, but the very character of that neighborhood is expressed by the size the lots already are. And so I think we have to be really, really careful with infill in this historic neighborhood in order to keep the character that makes Missoula the wonderful neighborhoods that we like to be living in. So I would like to request that you deny this rezoning request.
Thank you, ma'am. Step right up, folks. Yes, sir.
Yeah, good evening. My name's Wayne Cruz. I live 504 Beckwith, or 504 Cleveland, which is just right across the street from 210 Beckwith. And, yeah, I agree with a developer on the Missoulian reporting things. I think the last article, they said this lot size was 13,500 acres. If that were the case, I don't think we would have any problem here. But again, yeah, this is a neighborhood that, you know, we share a lot in common. I mean, four of us went together and bought a lawnmower that we share. There's a couple of us have bought kayaks, kind of like the kayak, the neighborhood kayaks. And, you know, just getting into the density that they're proposing just seems to be too much for this area. I mean, there would hardly be any lawn to speak of. He did show that one picture of the two nice houses that were landscaped in front of it, and it looked really nice. But in this instance, those two houses have a paved parking lot in front of them, which is completely different than what he had depicted in one of his pictures. So I think that's going to be a big change that really isn't warranted for this particular lot. So, yeah, I urge you to vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Elaine Conder, and I live at 504 Cleveland Street with my husband Wayne, who you just heard from. I have nothing against these young fellows, and the design that they have made me really question whether, how I felt about it. It looks good, but for one thing, you can't make the decision based on that. The other thing that I think's a little off for me tonight is that this 1932 plating of lots that suggests that it was meant to be high-density, I've talked to a few people that have said that that's not really true, that these were set that way so people could buy what they could buy, and have it just be a legal lot. But obviously, it was allowed for people to buy a bigger lot than those little high-density lots, or it wouldn't have been laid out the way it is. Right now, in our neighborhood, there are quite a few, mostly, homes that have enough room for lawns, gardens, landscaping. And, you guys, I'm just so concerned that this is going too fast. And what I'm concerned about is if you vote to... And what I'm concerned about is if you vote to yes for this rezoning, you are setting a precedent, how do you say that, precedent, precedence, that will allow, well, for one thing, it wipes out the zoning. What do we have the zoning for? And we had how many more people sign petitions that didn't, that do not want this to happen? My concern is, what does that say, then, that developers and the demand for infill is more important to us as a community than the existing neighbors? Somebody said to me not to be all emotional or talk about the emotional things about this, but the character of this town, in part, has a feeling of nurturing and respect for one another and tending and caring. The creative nature of this community, when you walk by and see sunflowers growing alongside somebody's yard, or right now, when we need crocuses, whether you own a lot that has a yard or not, you benefit from it. And if you put a 30-foot-high, dense building next to a house where somebody has tended for their lawn and cares and wants to be able to have a barbecue, or their kids in the back, without 16 people looking down on them, if we don't think about what we're doing, and we're doing this just for the sake of density's demand, or for us to make enough money for services for the city, we are going to lose the very character that's going to make people want to move into this town. And I hate to see us do this. And I request that you vote no, not just because of this one situation, but because this sets, opens a floodgate for any developer who wants to put up something. And I don't think this growth policy really has thoroughly thought through, where's the limit? How many of these high densities can you put in a single neighborhood before it drives out the people who have a yard? Because now the sun won't hit their garden anymore, because it feels like they're in a cave. Pretty soon, they're not going to care, you know, there's not going to be people caring about watering their lawns or growing the trees. I mean, have we thought about how much traffic we can handle with all this infill? Have we thought about the air quality, that it's, the impact on air quality? If we pave everything over and the lack of vegetation in this town, how much it's going to heat things up if everything's paved? That's down the road, but this is the way that leads to it. So, I ask you to vote no.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
My name's Tom Larson, and I own the property across the alley with my wife at 445 Rawlins. And I understand, I'm a business person, and I understand about development, and I understand what these folks did, and I have nothing against development and trying to make a profit. They come in, they buy this, and they want to put four units on something that should only have two units. If you go out and take a look at that alley, and I've been in that alley a lot, there is no way that that little lot can justify having eight cars coming in and out of there constantly. And then you have friends that come over, they'll have friends come over, and then they park in front of their place, they park in front of my place, and it deteriorates the neighborhood. I feel that that lot should have two homes. I'm all for somebody to own a home, but when you come in and buy a lot and want to stick up four high-rises, that doesn't fit the neighborhood. It's a neighborhood. It's too much. Because they built it, they sell it, they're gone to the next one. The rest of us suffer from that. I have a good friend that's lived over, I've lived in Missoula all my life, so I know what goes on. Good friend lives over on the north side, and with all the growth, all the complexes, all the infill, it has changed the character. So, I say let them have two homes, but four will ruin the neighborhood. So, I would appreciate a vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Take two or three tries at that. I won't be long. My neighbors have pretty well said everything I want to say. I'm Mark Hall. I live across the street from them and from him, around the corner from her and so forth. So, I'm at 505 Cleveland, cat a corner from the area. As I said, I think my neighbors have spoken well, and I support what they've said. I want to add that for a person who is not sophisticated in city government, the speed with which this has happened overwhelms. In December of last year, the property was purchased, it's March, and the decision is virtually made. My experience, after having gotten involved, as soon as I heard about it, was, yeah, but, yeah, but, yeah, but essentially, the decision appeared to me to be made before my involvement was enlisted. That is not a deliberate deceit on part of the city. The city does not go out of its way to mislead its citizens. To the contrary, you all work very, very hard to deliver the best services you can, and I wouldn't have your job for love nor money. It's tough, I know. But I need somebody in the city to advocate the position of the uninformed, and that's me. And I did not find that. And I think that is a big part of what you're hearing today. We didn't really feel like we had a chance to make our cares known, and that's why we're here tonight, and thank you for giving it to us now. I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I live at 212 West Beckwith Street West, adjacent to 210. Well, I'm boxed in where I'm at right now. I do not have that much property to do really what I'd like to do with some of the things I've got, some of the projects that I want to do, but I can't because I don't have enough property. So, my property line to 210 is within six feet, and I don't know how a man or a contractor is going to be able to put a house within six feet of my house. Won't work. There's the question of traffic. There's two alleys. One contractor said he isn't going to use that alley because they don't have any need for it. Have you been down Hickory Street? Seen what it's like? You can't get two cars on Hickory Street. And again, on the alley on Hickory Street, to accommodate two cars on that alley, what are you going to do? Cut everybody's property back 10, 15, 20 feet? No, you can't do that. And I sure as hell don't want anybody parking their cars and starting their cars at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning, looking down at me on my privacy, which I don't have, because it's going to be these monstrosities or ugly homes or whatever you want to call them. I'm dead-set against it. And not only for that, because of our neighborhood. I've lived in that neighborhood for near 50 years now. And it's, we've got, it's a nice neighborhood, very nice neighborhood. We know everybody. We've got daycare centers, one on each side of the alleys there. You just can't put more cars on there without jeopardizing some people's safeties. For myself, and I feel I'm speaking for my neighbors too, that the safety, the traffic, the traffic on West Beckwith is crazy, and it's just going to add more to it. And we don't need that. We just don't need that. Your city councilmen and the builders here, let them go out on Mullen Road. There's all kinds of crackerjack boxes out there that are waiting to be filled. Let them build out there. We don't need these things in our backyard. I've got a lot more to say, but I can see that probably burning up a little bit more of my time, and I thank you. But do take that into consideration. Take your time with whatever your recommendation's going to be.
Thank you, Mr. Francisco. Don't forget your cap, sir.
Hi, I'm Dana Eisenberg, and I live at 528 Cleveland, right around the corner from that proposed development. And I go through that alley all the time because the alley goes down my alley so that I can access my garage. That's my best way to get home. And I wasn't planning to stand up and talk tonight. I came because my neighbors have all been kind of rallying the troops here, and I was thinking, oh, it's just not in my backyard. They're just, you know, everybody just doesn't want the infill they say they want in their own backyards. But when I saw the plans, actually, that made me go, hey, wait, this isn't, this isn't the kind of thing that looks like infill for this neighborhood. This neighborhood can definitely put a house in that lot, but right now, you've got an alley that I walk down many times a week or drive through where two cars can't pass each other, and there's all these lovely lilac bushes and a little sign that says "Slow down for the kiddies," right? I mean, it's a little neighborhood spot, and it, you can look at the growth plan that says it's a great place to live because it's near everything wonderful, and that's true. And you can, it's a great, it is, it's a great neighborhood. And you can look at like way back when, when somebody decided that the zoning was supposedly meant for smaller units, but right now, that's not the way it is. The way that neighborhood has grown is perfect, and we've had some infill, and we have a whole new school getting developed there, and nobody's complaining about infill. But to turn that tiny little space and to show us pictures of these lovely new homes with a median and a sidewalk and a front yard and a big house, and to say this is how nice we do, I believe these developers probably do a nice job. And if they want to build a couple of nice houses in there to come live what their families have at it. But to turn that tiny little alley into a parking lot doesn't, doesn't make, excuse me, doesn't make any sense for our neighborhood. It just, it doesn't make any sense, and I don't see how there's even room there. I hadn't even thought about what Jim was talking about, parking. What about when other people come? Where are they going to park? There's not even a street for them to park on. So, it doesn't make sense. Put another house there, but it's zoned the way it is for a reason, and we've all abided by that, as far as I know. Somebody said something about how it's an island of zoning, as if that somehow means we don't deserve to live in the zoning that we bought into, right? Somebody said that the R, whatever it is, is an island, right? And maybe it is by zoning standards, but it's an island that has a very lovely character of people who really care and who use that alley as a nice, quiet space to smell the lilacs and watch out for the kitty and to pass through to the other very quiet street. So, I ask that you really think about it and come and see it before you rush to some vote, because it's not going to work. It's not going to work for Jim and Joanne. It's not going to work for all of us who need to pass through there peacefully, and I don't think it's going to work for the people who live there to be parking-lotted, living in a parking lot, essentially, in a neighborhood where everybody else has trees and lawns and wants to play ball and have barbecues. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Andrew Pearson. I live in a, at 623 Phillips, a townhome built by Torren and Caden over on the north side. It was actually among the examples, it was the highest-density example of townhomes. And I'm speaking to you today as a strong proponent of approving the resolution before you, and I just want to hit on three primary points on why I think it's important that you approve the resolution, and that's affordability, design, and the character of the neighborhood. So, the first point, affordability. We don't see a lot of young professionals here tonight talking about how it's difficult to find a place to live in Missoula, given the housing prices, but it's a real issue. Missoulian's been reporting on it, it's well-known, that for young professionals with young families, it's difficult to find a home that's affordable, given wages, predominant wages in the city. So, townhomes can provide an effective solution to that problem, because rather than developing through sprawl, you develop in, and you provide an opportunity for a young, a couple of young person, young professional to buy a home. You know, I used to rent from Beverly, actually. Sorry to point you out, but as soon as my wife and I found a townhome that Torren bought, we said, this is our chance to buy a home. So, we did it, and we're loving it. It's been great. So, affordability is important for growth as well. I mean, we see a lot of tech companies coming to Missoula. A friend of mine is over in Bozeman, he's telling me, I don't know if this is true, but tech is getting a little bit nervous about the housing prices in Bozeman. They wonder, can they attract young professionals to live in a community where the cheapest home is $400,000 if you want to live in the urban core where most young professionals want to live? So, you've got to create opportunities for people to live close to the center, and if they don't have it, the jobs are going to go with them. So, that's affordability. Design, it's fascinating to me that this controversy involves Torren and Caden, because, I mean, I'll tell you, if you look at the work they do, we're not talking about some fly-by-night developers from New Jersey or from wherever. I mean, these guys are rooted in the community, they care about the community, and they're, they are artists. The work that they, if you want to come check out the north side, the places that we live in, it is integrated into the north side neighborhood in a way that is amazing, because if, which goes to my third point, which is character. Character, they found a way to bring in high-density development in a neighborhood that's got some serious characte, our neighbor Val has been there for 60 years, and he knows everybody, and he's worked on cars, and he's got, you know, he's always talking to everybody, knows everybody, and I, we've only been there for a couple of years, and I feel like we're old friends. And then Tide's got his auto shop right there, and he's got people over working on cars there, and we know all of our neighbors, and everybody knows each other, and that ties back to the design, because it's designed in such a way that there's not friction because of traffic or cars, because parking's built into the plan. They build that into the townhome design. And we're all walking in, I have the privilege of walking in to work from where I live. So, I don't drive to work, and that saves a car downtown, and that's a car where we are. So, that's, you're saving parking on both ends. But the character is what I really want to emphasize, because the sense that you live in a place where you've got a really rooted community character, and the idea that you can bring in four homes and develop them right next to each other, and I can understand the fear that this is going to completely change everything and ruin it, ruin this great thing that we all it, ruin this great thing that we all love, Missoula. But when you've got thoughtful guys like this that are able to be sensitive to that and, and build, and in such an artistic way, I think if your experience is anything like ours, you'll find that you, the, the community is enhanced by the presence of young professionals who can finally buy a home and are excited to be in your neighborhood and are walking to and from work, and it's just an absolutely great thing. I really encourage the city council to approve the resolution and to see this kind of, the right kind of development, the kind of development that's thoughtful and careful and artistic. That's what Missoula needs more of, and this is a perfect example of it. So thank you. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Mayor, Council, thanks for your time tonight. My name is Jake Pelzare. I'm a resident of the north side. I've lived in Missoula for roughly 10 years. I've been a homeowner on the north side for about three years. I'm actually Heidi's neighbor. We, I just wanted to talk generally about this type of housing and comment briefly on this specific project. This type of housing's been a huge benefit to me and my wife, and we've had such an awesome experience because it, it made the buying a home for us way easier. Growing up in Billings, I, which, I don't know who's been to Billings or not, but the, the layout, especially towards the west, is, is much more spread out. It's, it's very different from Missoula. It's got a totally different vibe. One reason I came to school up here and stayed was because I, Missoula was, was a lot tighter. It wasn't spread out. It was unique. There was culture. There was, not all the houses looked the same, which in some big tracts of Billings, it, it looks like that. And so part of that uniqueness is what really drew us to Missoula and wanted me to stay here. I think, I live in one of these developments on the north side, and I, I think it's been really positive. I think the change, you know, when neighborhoods change, I think it's always, there's always friction there. But I think the, the change is good. And I would, I hope that most of the, the northsiders that have been there for a long time, like Andrew was saying, would, I think, respect the people that are moving in there. Like usually, it's young professionals that want to buy homes. I think we heard earlier from, you know, people renting in Missoula, that's a challenge. I think it's a huge challenge when you're moving from renting to try to find a starter home in Missoula. The, the home I live in now is three bedrooms, two and a half bath. We have radiant heated flooring, you know, nice fixtures. It's brand new. If I looked for anything close to that, three-bedroom, two and a half-bath, you know, in your guy's neighborhood, the north side, anywhere, you know, I'd, I'd probably be looking at paying double of what I could get into the place that I live now. And so that, you know, the affordability thing, I think, is huge for attracting, you know, young professionals to Missoula, like Andrew was saying. You know, walking distance, like Andrew was saying, I'm actually going to walk home tonight. I walk to work, you know, almost every day when the weather's nice or ride my bike. That's hard to do if, if you're, if all you can do is afford a home that's, you know, sprawl down, you know, the bitter route, up any of the valleys, way, you know, far out from downtown. That's really difficult. You know, I think the, the other thing which, you know, everybody, I don't think anybody disagrees with is, a lot of these town, these townhomes or these developments are usually replacing properties that are, you know, deteriorating, they've, you know, haven't been maintained. And so I think it's, you know, just because they're, they're different, you know, I don't think that's a bad thing, and it's usually enhancing the, you know, the, I think, quality of the places in the neighborhood. And I, I think it was commented earlier that, you know, infill development should be, you know, wisely done, responsibly done, intelligently done. And I think if, if there's a goal to have infill housing or higher-density housing closer to downtown, I don't know, you know, I don't know what it would look like, a better scenario than what Caden and Torren and some of their, you know, other counterparts, developers that build these are doing. I, I don't know what a better way to do that infill housing would be than these type of projects. And it's just been a great experience for me, and I hope other people, young people in Missoula can have the same experience that we have. And I highly recommend approving this project.
Thank you, sir.
Hey again. My name's Adam LaSalle. So, you know, I'm really, this is really interesting. This is my first time at a city council meeting, and I think that's what it's called, right? And it's nice to meet you, Mayor, you're, you're again? Look, here's, here's my concern. So these guys mentioned young professionals and attracting them, and I'm a young professional. I just moved from California. And I have to say with my experience, I actually have a lot of regret moving here because, as I mentioned earlier, this, it's like, it's like a rat race right now of people, builders coming in, putting up these properties overnight, and then, of course, they just go and they move on, and they move on to the next project. They want to make money. But it attracts people like the person I was telling you guys about earlier, Mary Heard, who's running a scam right now, you know, for young professionals like me. So as I'm listening to these residents of this neighborhood, I kind of feel for them. And, you know, no offense to these guys, but you guys aren't going to live in the neighborhood. And I feel like maybe if, if someone were actually purchasing this lot to move there and live there, they wouldn't be building four. So I, you know, I apologize for butting in, but this seems a little bit ridiculous. And, you know, sitting here and watching this and gaining, you know, just kind of observing the reputation, reputation of Missoula, I hope you guys vote no on this and maybe just try to bring these people together and have them work on a solution like maybe two homes that don't literally max out the space here. I also mentioned, I moved from West Hollywood where there is this epidemic, epidemic of McMansions going up and small, little neighborhoods with charm and uniqueness, and people hate it. It's the same thing, people coming in, trying to make money, you know, building, literally going from like the very, one edge of the lot to the other. It's, it's a bit ridiculous, and I think the answer is obvious that you just, you know, encourages people to take another look, listen to the residents who actually live there, and work with them. Sure, if they want to buy a lot, build on top of it, great, do it. But four homes, maxing out that little thing you showed me, it's a bit much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Towne, and I live at 725 South Sixth Street. And my neighbors did a great job. I really don't have additional information. My original concern was green space because I've met all my neighbors, usually. I've been there 14 years. Somewhere or another, we garden, we compare notes, we exchange plants. So green space is one of the things, and also parking. I want to know if people have signed the petition. I just, I don't have additional things to say. I just want to go on the record as I, I hope that you vote no.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Mayor, hi, Councilpeople. My name's Suzie Whitmer. I live at 444 Rollin Street, so I'm a neighbor to this property. And I just wanted to say I'm a young business professional too. I live in my home. I love my home. I love my neighborhood. I wanted a yard, that's why I moved to Missoula. I lived in DC before. I moved here, and I wanted a space where I could call home. When they show the houses, they're beautiful houses. There's nothing wrong with those houses, but, you know, it's zoned for two houses. So putting two beautiful houses like that in our neighborhood would be lovely. It would be aligned with our neighborhood. It would, you know, it wouldn't max out the alley that they're talking about, and it would look lovely. So please vote no for four houses, and we would gladly love two beautiful homes in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julie Devlin. I live at, at the corner of Cleveland and Crosby. So from my kitchen window, I can see Jim and Joanne's house, and they walk their dog around, and there's, it's a very walkable neighborhood, and I'm afraid of all the traffic, the increased traffic. It's going to make it unwalkable. People from our block walk their kids to the food farm, to the Orange Street Food Farm, and people walk to Aging Services and St. Joe's. But mainly, they just take walks with their dogs and kids all around there. And I think it's going to be dangerous with the increased traffic. And it's just no way to treat neighbors, I don't think. You know, they've, Jim and Joanne have lived there for 50 years, and to have four houses looking down on them. And, and it's a neighborhood of very old wooden houses, and I don't think these type houses would fit in with the character of the neighborhood. But, and, another thing is that when Willard is done building their new building, their parking lot's going to be on Ash, which is a one-way little cul-de-sac. And all the kids who drive home for lunch every day, they go by my house now, but they'll, they'll, they'll have to take a right, and then they'll take a right on Beckwith, and then a right on Cleveland. And it's just going to put a lot of traffic out there when people are walking, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Ms. Merritt?
At the LUP meeting, you mentioned that you were planning to put a sidewalk down at the alley. Is that still part of the plan?
Correct, yes. This is my presentation.
So if folks are going to talk, I need you to come to the microphone for the record, please. Thank you.
Sorry about that. My name is Torren Etter. Yes, we are proposing a sidewalk and working with engineering on a design for a five-foot wide sidewalk that would be on our property the entire length of, of the alley. Thank you.
Ms. Hart?
Ms. Baker? I was wondering if you could address maybe the historical context of the island of the zoning and that change. I think you said it was 1970 or '72. Why that particular triangle out of the entire sea that is zoned higher density, please?
We found the records that indicated that the zoning change was approved in 1972. Unfortunately, because the records are that old, there was no indication of why they wanted to change it. So all we know is that for 40 years, it was zoned at higher density. It was changed to 5.4 in 1972, but the reason for it wasn't part of the records.
Ms. Ramos? Ms. Jones?
I had several questions, Ms. Grass. First of all, I had, there was a public comment that was submitted that wondered if there was sufficient sewer infrastructure in place to support additional buildings, if more went in than just one or two buildings. Is that something you can talk about?
There is, I have heard in our previous hearings, older clay sewers that run along the alley. As part of this project, they will install connections to the sewer and... Torren, can I ask you, are there upgrades to the sewer that will go in as part of this?
Caden Barsley with EBC Development. We investigated the sewer in the main ends, just at the end of our property. So we, we're at the very high end of the sewer, if you will, and it flows towards West Beckwith, away from Hickory Street. It's a modern sewer. It's got a manhole and perfectly capable of holding what we plan to put in. There's also water line in the alley, and gas lines, so all utilities are available in the alley.
If you don't, a few more questions? You might, I think you can answer the next one. There are two huge spruce or pine trees that border Beckwith, and it looks like they're in the right-of-way. Are they in the right-of-way? And...
Those are city trees on, on the city right-of-way, not on our property.
Is there any, due to construction, any reason to take those down, or would they remain?
No, we, we will not be accessing the street. Well, all our utilities are in the alley, so our entirety of the access will be through the alley. Should not be any danger of those.
And then, Jen, if I could... Or Marty?
I want to reposition the microphone here because its trajectory is like this, so when you talk down into it, it's not picking up the voice as well as it will if you talk into the front of it.
Thanks. Jen, I had one more question. For the, there's the current, there, what would be the setback from the side yard on a new house that would be put in facing Beckwith? Side yard from the property line, because there was some discussion of that earlier tonight.
If this request is approved, there would be a five-foot setback from that property line. So currently, it's 7.5 feet. That would go down by 2.5 feet.
Further questions? Ms. West?
So I just wanted to reaffirm possibly that these will indeed be separate lots and not filed under a townhome exemption, correct?
Yes, they will be separate lots, and we'll do a boundary line relocation in order to get those. The main advantage of a townhome exemption, if any of you don't know, is that when you, like the RM 145 that surrounds it, if the density is lower than the minimum lot size, then the townhome exemption comes into play where you can get the desired density and still have single-family ownership. But the zoning we're requesting is the minimum density and the lot size match, so boundary line relocation is our normal route for developing.
Further questions? Seeing none, Mr. DeBart.
I move that council adopt an ordinance to rezone fractions of lots 7 through 10 in the south half of lots 11 and 12 of Block 16 in South Missoula addition, 13,564 square feet. In Section 28, Township 13 North, Range 19 West, from R 5.4 residential single dwelling to RT 2.7 residential two-unit slash townhouse, based on the findings of fact in the staff report.
That motion is in order. There's our discussion on the motion. Ms. Merritt?
I'm going to be supporting this request tonight. I can't help but think about the direct correlation between property taxes and our very low housing vacancy rates. When the vacancy rates are as low as they are right now, that means, obviously, that demand is very high. High demand means high prices, and that means high property appraisals, and that means high property taxes, which we have all heard plenty about, that people are unhappy with. One aspect, and it's just one aspect, of relieving our high property tax burden has got to be increasing the supply of housing in order to head off these ever-increasing housing costs. The proposed rezone supports this larger, ongoing effort to focus inward with our development. In some of the comments that we've received, it's been suggested multiple times that the only benefit of this rezone project would accrue to the developers. I don't agree with that concept. Replacing this one rundown house and a vacant lot that's full of weeds and has abandoned cars parked in it with four nice, new, single-family homes benefits our larger community by providing decent housing where city services already exist, in a place where it's cheaper to build them. So I'll be supporting this tonight. Thanks.
On the motion, Mr. Ramos?
Oh, man, Councilwoman Merritt stole a lot of what I was going to say, and I'm going to plow ahead anyways. So housing affordability is something that we all care about on the council very much, and as you said, it's all kind of determined by supply and demand, and property taxes tie into that. And one of the gentlemen from the Renters Union spoke, and it sounded like one of the main things that you were fighting for was, was lower rent prices. And unfortunately, there's, there's two major things that do tie into how much somebody pays in rent, and that's going to be property taxes that get passed down from the landlord to the renter, and then there's going to be a lack of new supply. And I think that this definitely fulfills the, the need for new supply. And, let me see here. And I also was, wanted to chime in, you guys probably won't like this at all, but this did start in December, and it is being approved right, right now, and I love that. I think that it's streamlining the process. I think the count, or the, the staff is doing a great job, and the faster that you can do this... this, the cheaper it's going to be for everybody, and the more help they can be to our overall affordability. And on items like this, and on some other items, you see that I sometimes differ with the rest of the council on maybe, not a partisan measure, but on items like this, it's not partisan at all. It's more, we're kind of bound by the law. If it's legal, it's legal, and our hands are kind of tied on it. And I know I'm surrounded by some of the most compassionate folks in Missoula right now on the city council, and sometimes they don't like the decision that the law dictates that we make, and we have to stay within the bounds of the law. And I'm going to be supporting this motion tonight, although I do feel for the folks in the neighborhood.
Further discussion? Ms. Jones?
I think I'm going to take longer than three minutes, so bear with me tonight. I've read all the public comment that was submitted. I've fielded phone calls, and I've tried to politely tell people to just submit comment via email, and I've listened to everyone tonight, and I've spent a lot of time thinking about this, and I've driven it and I've walked it down that alley numerous times, and I know that neighborhood well. I wanted to emphasize a few things at the beginning, and that is, it is very frustrating as a city councillor to not be able to respond when constituents call me, because I think that's really a main part of our job. But when we are deciding land use issues, property rights, we can't. It's the law. We can't talk to people because we're making a quasi-judicial decision. So I just wanted to emphasize that, first of all, because I think people in city council, it is a service industry, but we can't talk to you about this, although we listen and we read everything and we think hard about it. I also wanted to say that most neighborhoods in Missoula are experiencing change right now, because of demographics, because of population growth, because of housing costs. The only ones that aren't experiencing change, if at all, are gated communities, and I don't know that we even have any of those yet, and platted subdivisions, like Linda Vista, just because of the way they were built. At this point in time, they are not experiencing change, but every other neighborhood is, some to greater degrees than others. So this is the world we live in now, and there's going to be change. But I think the important issue that's been raised is, well, just a second before I get to that. I also wanted to emphasize that we have a growth policy that was years in the making with a huge amount of community input. And it was approved a couple of years ago by council. The growth policy is mandated by the state of Montana. We have to do this. And then, once it is in place, it is a tool that we need to use in these types of decisions. And for us to go in a different direction than our growth policy, we have to have very, very good specific reasons. So, I wanted to try and explain the context in which we have to work as a city council when something like this comes to us. And I think affordable housing and the costs and the poverty taxes are all very important, but what I really wanted to talk about with my comments was neighborhood character. Because this is something that, ever since I got on council over two years ago, we've been talking about neighborhood character. And I think Missoula values neighborhood character, but defining it is challenging. Everybody has a little bit different idea of what that character is, and what crosses the line, and what is and isn't good. Density is one factor, I think, of neighborhood character. And when I looked closely at that neighborhood and that specific lot, I wrote down all of the density that I found there, besides single-family detached homes. So, directly across the alley from where the triangular house would possibly be built if this passes, there's, I don't know if it's a duplex or a triplex, but that's far greater density than just a single family. Within one block, there's a duplex at 815 and 817 Hickory, in fact, right next to it, well, a couple houses down. And the 800 block of Sixth Street that I'll talk about later has a lot of density. Within one and a half blocks from this lot, there's an 18-plex on Sixth and Walnut. At 514 Rollins, there's a six-plex. At Beckwith and Stevens, there's an eight-plex. And within two blocks, there's the Veranda Apartments over on Cleveland, 705 Cleveland, which are six apartments plus another house in the back. There's a four-plex at 721 Cleveland. And at Stevens and Crosby, there's an 11-plex. So there is density that has been built into this neighborhood over the years, even though the majority of it's single-family detached homes, there's a lot of density. So the second issue that I wanted to talk about was the fact that this is an old neighborhood, which I think creates great character. The McCormick Neighborhood Historic District comes down to Sixth Street, from the river to Sixth Street. And I looked up all of the documentation when that was created as a historic district, and I want to read you a few lines from that, because it helped me put this neighborhood into context. It says, "While many of the dwellings are modest, single-family residences..." And I would preface this, this is, gosh, a half a block from this proposed lot. So, to me, that's the neighborhood. "While many of the dwellings are modest, single-family residences, a large number of multifamily dwellings exist." So that's density. Oh, where is it? It discusses in here the fact that, as this entire neighborhood was built, it reflected what the current economic situation was of Missoula at the time. And there were large houses built on big lots for business owners and city leaders. There were smaller houses built and multifamily houses built that were for the workers, and there were many commercial industries throughout this historic neighborhood. Let me keep going here for a second. I told you it was going to be longer than three minutes. Sorry. So, an interesting fact also is, it, okay, it discusses the fact that, "In contrast, and appearing to reflect the housing crunch..." Wait. "A majority of the residential dwellings are located on single lots, with several of the larger homes located on corner or double lots. In contrast, and appearing to reflect the housing crunch experienced in Missoula throughout history, are a number of residents that own less than one city lot. These vary in size from a quarter to a half to three-quarter lots." So that's sprinkled throughout this historic district. And then it discusses in detail, and I thought this was interesting, the 800 block of South Sixth Avenue. "Cottages like the row of dwellings constructed on the 800 block of South Sixth Avenue were constructed around the time of World War II. This row of seven cottages that takes up nearly the entire block were constructed 40 years later than many of the other houses. Most were constructed on less than one full lot, and are unique in that they appear to have been constructed around the time the War Production Board ordered the curbing of non-defense construction, meaning they didn't have a lot of materials to build." So if you walk down the 800 block of South Sixth Avenue, you'll see these very small cottages, and with a lot of them, there's about 10 feet in between them. So, the point I'm trying to make is, there's this tapestry that has been created in this neighborhood, because it wasn't built like a platted subdivision all at once. It was built up over time, and there's small houses, big houses, multifamily, all sorts of different dwellings that have created this tapestry that I think create character, and that's why we choose to live in a neighborhood like this. This is like my neighborhood on the other side of Stevens. It's built up over time, and there's a lot of different layers and patinas in it. So I understand this is a greater density, and this is change, but I do think it is a reasonable step up in density. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. I did want to also comment that the alley is, currently, the alley is not good. The paved area is about 10 feet or less, and the proposal, there will be a 20-foot paved alley plus a sidewalk. And about a year ago, we had a conditional use come through on a daycare that went in down on Sixth Street in Hickory, and there was a lot of comment from neighbors in that area about the fact that the alley wasn't safe, it couldn't handle more, it was so narrow, it's terrible visibility. This will fix the alley and create a much better connectivity that I think is much better for this neighborhood. So I appreciate that this is change, and this is difficult, but I am very glad the proposal is not for an eight-plex to go in, but for the single-family dwellings, because I think, the one last point I want to make, while everyone falls asleep, is, we often talk on city council about the fact that, as we put infill in, character is essential if the infill is going to work. And our Housing Department of Housing is, that is one of the items that, my understanding is, they are working on. And we don't have that tool yet, to say, if something's going to go in, it will hopefully look like something that will look good in the neighborhood. We don't have that tool, and I hope we have that in the future. But if we had that tool, frankly, in my mind, it would be something like what is being proposed to be built here. That's probably what it would look like, as opposed to a lot of other things that I see around town that really wouldn't look good. So I'm in favor of this. I appreciate everyone's time and patience, and I'm in favor of it.
Ms. West?
All right. So I've had so many different thoughts in regard to this project. And first of all, I started out living in Missoula at 619 Phillips, which is now occupied by 623 Phillips. I used to live at the old mudsite in a single-family home, and now there's four townhouses in that space. And I think a lot about neighborhood character and what a neighborhood feels like, but that also leads me to think about how we ended up with different zoning districts or zoning areas in different parts of town. And I obviously live on the north side, which is one of the oldest neighborhoods in Missoula, but has always had a very liberal zoning. For example, my house is RM 135, but my block largely was single-family homes originally, if you go back to the original, you know, sandbore maps, and over time, that's changed And what you often see is that zoning patterns arise and tell a history of folks who had more resources and folks who had less. And that affects, of course, how we develop into the future. And I guess, I don't, I don't think that infill development automatically results in affordable housing. It's affordable to somebody, but I develop affordable housing, and in that context have a very specific definition of what that means. So I don't necessarily think that okaying infill development is going to result in, you know, it's not going to solve our housing affordability issues alone. I think we need to be a little more intentional overall. But, that being said, I think that this is a good opportunity for infill development that results in single-family homes that do have yards and do have setbacks, and will likely have enough parking, assuming folks actually take advantage of the location and don't own three cars and drive everywhere. So I support this, and I think that it can be done well, and I hope it's done well, and I assume it will be. And that our growth policy has identified areas that are available for more dense development because of their location, and in many ways, you know, we're seeing a lot of infill development, especially on the north side and the west side, because they're accessible, but this is also an accessible neighborhood to the rest of town, and I think it's well-located, so.
Ms. Anderson?
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for coming out and voicing their opinion. Sometimes city council meetings, there's not a lot of folks in the audience, and sometimes, like tonight, there are quite a few. I will try to keep my remarks brief. I agree with the majority of what has been said before me. I think it is unfortunate that originally, that these were being portrayed as townhomes, and when this is a single-family neighborhood, but I appreciate that the developer has painstakingly tried to emphasize again and again that these are single-family homes. Each of them will have their own lot, and they will be individually owned. And I hear the concern of many of you that these new people might add or detract from the neighborhood feel or getting to know your neighbors. And I think you might enjoy some of the people who are moving in next to you. I specifically wanted to move into your neighborhood when I first bought a home. I said I wanted to be in the slant streets, I wanted to be able to walk to coffee and to groceries and be on a bus route, and there were no homes available when I was looking. And I would have been a really good neighbor. I work from home. I'm the neighborhood dog watch when the dogs run away. So you might end up with some really great people who will, you know, add to the character and share a lot more with you and want to talk about, you know. I just think that you don't know, and change is scary. The number-one factor in affordable housing right now is the cost of land. We live in a valley, and we are not manufacturing any more land. And so the thought of that sometimes we'll buy in multiple lots, that's just unrealistic in the cost feasibility. We have a growth policy that was, like, when, very articulately laid out, thought out over years and years, and that are, those are the principles in which we are guided to make our decision. And having sat through many of Jenny's presentations, Development Services also has a subset of criterias in which they have to look at to even bring this forward to city council, and she lays those out, and those are the laws in which we must make our decision. You're concerned about changing the zoning to RT 2.7. Well, there is RT 2.7 in that neighborhood, directly adjacent to this property. So, that zoning already does exist in this neighborhood. There was concerns about being able to have really tall high-rises. Currently, any one of you could build an extension onto your home up to 35 feet, because that's where the zoning is, and this doesn't change that. So I know that this may feel like it's been willy-nilly done, but I assure you that there has been policies and guidelines that have been followed through this process, and I hope that you will welcome the new neighbors into your community, and I will be supporting this motion.
Ms. Masera?
I took some notes and some of my, put some of my thoughts down while the presentations were going on, and just to remind ourselves that this is a rezoned, and as such, we cannot condition it. We don't have a proposal before us that we could tweak or work with a developer to bring something that makes everyone happy, which I'm not sure that that's even possible in the real world. But I read all the comments from the neighbors, and I agree with a lot of you, but I also think that we do have a growth policy that has taken a comprehensive look at what we need as a community, not just at individual blocks. I appreciate the developers letting us know what your intentions are, and that you intend to build four single-dwelling units on this site, perhaps because that's what the market dictates right now, but perhaps because you really want to make it compatible with the neighborhood. I also appreciate you showing us that you're willing to go beyond what's required by putting pedestrian connections in the area. And so I hope that you also do more than what you're required, and that you work with the neighbors as you develop the site. I also encourage you to not just set high density in this area, but also set high design standards for infill development. I also encourage you to lead the way in developing, developing housing that enhances the neighborhood. I know you already do, but show us that you can do it here, too. And finally, I encourage you to not just be the new neighbor, but be a good neighbor. Thank you.
Ms. Hart?
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for coming tonight in order to express your thoughts on this rezoning project. I've heard all of your concerns, and I've read your emails, listened to your voicemails, talked with a few of you, and having driven down that alley or walked it numerous times in my lifetime, but especially since this project came before, so I went through there with, you know, with, I guess, a fresh lens, if you will. And I come to this point where I am reminded of what the Buddha told in a parable in a sutra. "A man traveling across a field encountered a tiger. The man fled, and the tiger was after him. And coming to a precipice, he caught hold of the root of a wild vine, swung himself down over the edge. The tiger sniffed at him from above. In trembling, the man looked down to where far below another tiger was awaiting to eat him, and only the vine sustained him. Two mice, one white, one black, little by little started to gnaw away at the vine. The man saw a luscious strawberry near him, and grasping the vine with one hand, he plucked the strawberry with the other. How sweet it tasted." Why do I even bring this up? So here it is. We are here in Missoula facing dueling conundrums, the tiger of the past and the tiger of the future. As we cling to this vine of current preferences, as a councillor, I find that a willing developer who acts in the best possible way to be our strawberry. So to Torrin and Kayden of BBC and all future developers, we do not just want shelter in our neighborhoods. We want to live in homes we can cherish and be proud to care for. Your efforts should not be for making of a simple buck, but be testimony to your craftsmanship and integrity. Therefore, do take away from this process that we need homes constructed like they are our last best place. Previously, on a prior subdivision review, which I think was just February, January, I made the comment to those neighbors in a different ward than mine, that they had to bear their fair weight to the growth policy, and it'd be hypocritical of me to not ask my own neighbors to do the same. So please share your lawnmowers, share your kayaks with the new neighbors. This neighborhood is and always will be a nice neighborhood. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the motion to adopt the ordinance and approve the rezone, it takes seven affirmative votes in order to pass. Harp? Harp votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Merritt. Merritt votes yes. Ramos.
Yes.
Ramos votes yes. West. West votes yes. Anderson. Anderson votes yes. Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Becerra. Becerra votes yes. And DeBary. DeBary votes yes. Would anyone like to change your vote? Add his 10 i's and 2 ebsent.
And the motion is approved. We have no additional public hearings this evening. I will pass on communications from the mayor. We'll begin general comments from council members this evening with Ms. Merritt.
I would just like to say we had a very successful March for Our Lives on Saturday. Our students here in Missoula did most of the planning and organizing, and they led the way, and I'm just really proud to see so many great young people in our community.
Ms. Anderson? Ms. Armstrong? Mr. Ramos?
I'm glad that the renters' union is still here. I just wanted to touch on a couple of quick things that maybe I didn't touch on before. So first of all, a lot of people don't know this, they don't put the two and two together, but when property taxes go up, rent also tends to go up. So if you're concerned about your rent going up, I encourage you all to come down here at the Budget Committee meeting, or the Budget Hearing, and oppose any sort of tax increase. And also, last week, I talked about tax increment financing a little bit, and one of my favorite council people pointed out to me that maybe I wasn't clear enough in one specific area of that. When I say that the city gave $6.7 million to the mall, I'm not talking about they didn't, like, write them a check to the Lambros family and away they go. What I was simply referring to was the fact that we did $6 million worth of work on their property that ultimately allowed them to get another client and increase the overall value of the mall, a large client, and then the value was increased by city work and taxpayer dollars, and then it did, in fact, sell at a higher rate than it would have had we not done that work. So that's all I was talking about, and I wanted to clarify that no checks were cut to Lambros or the mall. So, thank you.
Mr. DeBary? Ms. Harp? Ms. Jones? Ms. Becerra? Mr. Hess? And Ms. West?
There's a north-side, west-side neighborhood council meeting coming up, or on the 27th and 68th, in the Hall Frazier Room.
We have no committee reports, nor do we have any new business. Are there any additional items to be referred this evening? Seeing none of those, any miscellaneous communications, petitions, reports, or announcements? Seeing none of those, as always, I thank you for your service. We will be adjourned.